Good evening, everyone.
Good luck.
Yeah. Today's meeting is open to the public and a warm welcome to you all for your attendance. My name is councillor Sophia Said and I am the Chair of the Local Area Committee. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I will hand over Claire Cummins to read out the housekeeping arrangement.
Thank you, Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as to not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff. The assembly point is outside, near the main entrance where you came in on the pavement there. There are toilets situated through the double doors that have just come through on the right-hand side, and then further toilets through the second set of double doors on the right-hand side also. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live for subsequent broadcasts via the council website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know.
Thank you. Can I ask members of the councillors and their officers around the table to introduce themselves? We will start with councillor Jane Dunn.
Councillor Talibus and councillor Ben Greve Ward.
Councillor Dawn Day and councillor Shaggy in Brightside Ward.
Councillor Mike Chaplin for Southie Ward.
Councillor Mark Jones, Deputy Chair and Burngreave councillor.
Claire Cummins from Democratic Services. Lindsay Hill, Like Manager.
Councillor Gareth Slater, Southie Ward.
Fran Bellbin councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Oh, there we go. Councillor Mark Russling for Shaggy in Brightside.
And councillor Nikki Bellfield for Firth Park Ward.
Councillor Gadda Wetherill for Shaggy in Brightside Ward.
Thank you, everyone. Before we proceed with the agenda, I would like to explain how the meeting will work. First, we deal with the formal business of apologies, declaration and the minute of the last meeting. We will then move to the item of North East Local Area Committee's spend report. The area manager will firstly give a presentation. There will then be an opportunity to discussion, debate, and the members of the committee will be asked to agree all recommendation of the report. Then, we will have an update of the following: North East Local Area Committee engagement and from Susan; public meeting discussion, a presentation from Carl; we will then have an interactive session for these present to take part in. Finally, we will have a public question and answer sessions. Over to Claire.
Just writing to Apologies for Effidence, I've got apologies from councillor Abdul Khum.
Thank you. There are no items that require an exclusion of the public press. Item number four, declaration of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of the business on the agenda? Thank you. Item number five, minutes of previous meetings. Let's ask the members to approve as correct records the minutes of their last meeting held 27th of February 2024. Approved? Approved. Thank you. Item number six. Lindsay Hill will now give us a presentation, an update of the North East Local Area Committee budget. Members of the North East Local Area Committee are asked to note the expenditure made in 2023 and 2024 and agrees that recommendations set out for use of 2024 and 2025 budget to address the local priorities of the North East lack and details of a report. Authorities for the community service manager to make decisions on expenditure from any budget allocated to the local area committee provided that the decision to take part of the consultation with the local area committee chair, spending in a line of any specific purpose of the allocated budget, the decision may not approve expenditure of more than £10,000. A report detailing the dedicated spend decisions taken by the committee service manager is presented to the next local area committee. Over to Susan.
Thanks, Chair. So... Is that, sorry, is that agreed? We're just going to do the, so the report is actually in your pikeses, Agenda Item Six. So I've come today to ask for that note expenditure 23/24 and agrees the recommendations set out for use of the budget 24/25, but also outlines details of projects that are proposed in there, and then authorizes me as community services manager to make decisions on expenditure from any budgets allocated to the local area committee.
Thank you. Has everyone agreed to that? Thank you. Over to Susie?
Yeah.
We call a Susie by Suzanne, isn't it?
Good evening, everybody. So I'm just going to talk you through an engagement tool that we've started to use in the North East lack and that we're hoping to use even more as time goes on. So it's Have Your Say, you will have heard of it before, but we're hoping to expand our usage of this even further. So, next slide, please. So first of all, the advantages we thought of using Have Your Say was to... We wanted to use it more to raise awareness of what the local area committees are. We wanted to use them to keep people updated and supported with local issues. We wanted to encourage residents and groups' involvement, so there's lots of tools where you can get involved. We wanted to promote all the work that the Lacks are doing, and we wanted to use this tool to support networking. Next slide, please. So when you go on to the landing page of Have Your Say, it's the hub page, it will look something like this, but you've got the link up, please. And the landing page will give you a bit of information about what local area committees are, and then it's split into all the seven local areas, choosing your correct local area. So for us, the North East Local Area, this will then be the landing page for the North East Local Area Committee. It tells you a little bit about the North East Local Area Committee, who we are, who your councillors are, our themes, just there, and all sorts of information. On the sides as well, you also have lots of other information about the North East Local Area Committee, so it could be our, how to contact us, could be important links. You'll notice on the sides, you've got our themes, which are also on the front bit of the page, where you can click directly onto them, and that will take you straight into the page for that theme. For example, the environment being one of our themes, this is the landing page for our environment theme, tells you a little bit about our theme, what our priorities are for this theme, what we delivered so far, so that would be what we delivered last year, just a little bit of a snippet about that. Again, on the side, you'll see lots of different links that will be relevant to the environment, that will be useful to you. And you'll notice on the side there, it says our current projects, so those are our projects that we are delivering under the theme of the environment. If you wouldn't mind scrolling down, sorry, back on to the environment page, if you scroll all the way down, we have lots of different tools that get you actively engaged in those kind of themes. So for example, this is a map where you can drag and drop a pin of where you can see, and you've spotted some fly tipping or some dog fouling, it will all depend on what the theme is. So you can drag the pin, drop it, and that information will go directly to us, and we can then try and deal with that. Another example, so this is one of our live projects, the dog fouling one, that you could click on directly through the environment page, tells you a little bit about the project and what we are currently doing about that project. If you wouldn't mind going back to the PowerPoint, please. So there's lots of information on there to explore. If you did want to have a closer look yourselves, there's a QR code at the back on our display that takes you to a link tree, and then on there, there'll be our link to the Have Your Say page. Other tools that we want you to use to get involved and help us are things like forums. So we've got a project about gathering information about our local parks, and we want you to get engaged and help us by sharing your knowledge, so you might see something like that. On the next slide, you might have experienced some of our amazing events that we've hosted, so you might want to share your experiences about them as well. So there's all sorts of ways we hope to engage you through this tool. Our next step for this really is to get it out there. It is a project that is a work in progress, it's still a work in progress, and I think it will be for a little while, but it's up and running. We're going to be sharing that QR code, taking it out at events. And so, yeah, we want to keep it updated, and we'd like you to use it and be aware of it. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah? Oh, do I need to hit there?
Yeah. Needs to be a mic.
Thank you. My name's Margaret Hild from Burngreath Tara, the local one. My question is, do you have an actual link that's not a QR code? Because my phone, for example, will not check, it takes the photo, it doesn't put me through. So is there a normal link for that particular, to get to that particular site?
Yes, there is, and I'll share that with the QR code as well. Whenever I share the QR code, I'll share the link with that. Yeah.
Thank you, fans. McDaniel's brushes Tara Firth Park. I'd like to ask, yes, this all looks very nice, but what about people that can't get on to it? How are you going to communicate with them?
That's a very good question. Well, we do things, like we do have the newsletter, that we're building up newsletter that we're sharing, that we're sharing things that we do via that.
Does this allow to go up to every house?
Sorry?
This is our brand new lack office, which has only actually been in team, shockingly, about two months, and you've done a fantastic job in not being able to maybe answer some of the questions. I think there's other ways to engage as well, so it's not just, this is just one way and one tool that we can use. We're obviously out in communities and we're using different ways to, but what we want is your ideas to tell us how to communicate with people and how we can get some of these messages out there about what we're doing.
Can I bring in, sorry, go ahead. Can I just get an answer from councillor Dawn, please?
No, it was a bit of a, it was a question leading on from what my esteemed colleagues up there said, because it's my first person. No, it was actually picking up on about not having a smartphone and not being able, I mean, I speak to people every day that have run out of data. So are we having this in our libraries? Are we having this in our community buildings where people go? Because I think it's really important, A, that the link's there if they can get on the internet for free, can we look, move forward as having letters in doctor's surgeries? And I think especially in an area like we are in where we know there's issues about data, it's actually going that little bit step forward and actually, you know, just making sure that people are aware of it. Because I'd love to see this as an app, do you know, it would be really, really good and really easy, but the first step for me would be getting everybody on free internet, do you know, that would be, and then, yeah, thank you.
Lindsay, yeah, cool.
I've just had a bit more about, we've got a community information project, oh, sorry, we've got a community information project that we're doing. We're also looking at running some pilots with local businesses, community groups, doctors' surgeries, police, everybody that's in and around our communities on understanding this, knowing how to get on it, and trying to help people to get more digitally included, but then also being able to share that information in a variety of different formats. So we've got some, like, sign language videos and things that we're trying to do. Susie's been doing a great job in doing some research about different ways of accessibility and to get this information out. I'll say it just one way, but you're right, you're absolutely right, councillor Dawn, we need to get that message out there. Thank you.
Can I put my two pence in? So one of the, one of the first things is obviously contacting your local councillors the way that you've always been. We're also working with partnership with the Tara's, so Katie Ratchall does not leave a meeting without us talking to her. So she will be the one who will be sending any information across to all the Tara's as well as everything like that. We are working with the Integrated Care Board, so Lindsay has been working with the local watered-down NHS, if you know what I mean, and they want to put in their pilot more and more of communication with people. But we, there also is a common, any public meeting, there'll be a comment box in the back, but there's also some information with the local offices, you can just directly ring them and say, this is what's happening, what's happening about my environment, what's happening about the crime, or something, and they'll direct you into the next meeting that's been happening and everything like that. As we're staying, as well as the local notice boards that is happening in the area, so we will continue to voice that out, but we also rely on the residents to tell us how can we scoop up even more and more, because my mum is not in IT and she needs that kind of help as well as my disabled brother. Thank you. Any more questions? Can we move on to the next item, which is, this is the exciting bit, I like.
Sorry, Chair, I don't think we answered Mick's question about the newsletter. Is the newsletter a digital newsletter or a paper newsletter? And where does it go out to? Is that what you wanted to know me?
Yeah.
And I keep asking, how do we get in touch with these people? A few years ago, all the community buildings were going to have internet, still waiting, and all Lindsay's just mentioned it, but this is stuff that we need, and we just keep going round and round in circles. But you can spend money, like, we're spending £4 million on shutters and cleaning properties. Why should we be spending that sort of money? Why not get down to the grassroots? The idea was when we went to local area committees was to tidy the estates up. Have you been on them lately? They're going backwards. I hope this, that they're going to bring up will help, but I think you're too late. Just my opinion. Here, take this off.
Thank you, Mick. And I hear you, and the team has put an environmental team in. Do you want to mention the environmental meeting that you had last, two weeks ago?
Yeah, so Wantat Projects is around the green network that we've created. So if you want to talk to Wantat team at back, and they'll tell you a bit more information, there's actually some information up on board as well about it, but that will be really successful, trying to get people's ideas of what you want to do and where we can improve. Amy came along and joined us in the, I don't want to say you're here, but you're here today.
Thank you. Item nine, round the table discussion on public meetings and community project items, sorry, item eight, sorry, public meeting discussion, it threw me off. Bless him. Carl Malouli is here now to present this item of public meeting discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. You all right there? No heckling? Okay, so good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Carl Malouli, I'm the Head of Service responsible for the local area committees, and the presentation this evening I'm going to be giving is around the public meetings, so the meetings you're here for today. So just as a bit of background, because some people may not know some of this, so the local area committee public meetings were introduced in 2021, and there are four meetings held, and they're rotated around each of the wards of the areas over a yearly basis. And when they were first, it's a bit too fast, and before, as they were brought out, the purpose of them was to engage, empower and enable local residents and communities. So that was the purpose when they were put in place. And then the other key thing was around making decisions in the communities, or bringing decisions into the, into the public spaces. Okay, so obviously, three years down the line, there's been a lot of positives that have come from the meetings. They've evolved over time, largely based on feedback from attendees, from councillors, from officers who've come along, and that's allowed us to be more flexible with the agenda. So case in point now, I think initially we dealt with all the public questions at the beginning, so we're trying to do things in a more interactive way to make them more engaging for people. Themed meetings relevant to the local area have also been important, so if we've been able to do some work in those spaces where actually it's more important to that local community, they've been better attended. It's a good opportunity to engage with local councillors, obviously you get the chance to have the questions and so on, but we're going to do this shortly. We have the interactive sessions where we're sat on workshops and an opportunity to discuss, and I think that's both been valuable for members of the community, but also for local members in terms of collecting feedback and gaining some intelligence there. And the other thing is, it's allowed services to come along to either talk, to share information, to act as consultation, or to deal with issues. And you'll notice colleagues here, such as from housing, are here today, so if people have got specifics they need to raise, that perhaps isn't the right form in the public space, they can go and speak to colleagues. So there being some of the positives that have come from the meeting. But as with everything, we have had challenges during that period of time. The governance element is very formal, so I think for some people, this setup here where you've got the elected members at the front and you've almost got a barrier, that can put people off. Not everybody's confident enough to ask questions in these forums. There are challenges on locations, whether that be finding the appropriate buildings, as you'll see, we have the webcasting equipment, so we need to make sure we've got the right testing, so that people can hear it if they're not in the room. And also thinking about locations, because we're moving around the wards, do we get people from those different wards going to different meetings? I think North East is probably a different case in point, because geographically it's quite a small area in comparison to others, for instance, the north, where you've got Stocksbridge, Stanington, where east and west Echel sphere, where it's much more spread geographically, so you may not necessarily get people going to those different meetings. Attendance varies. I remember being in this room before, and it was almost standing room only, it was packed out, obviously there are people here today, but not as many as before, so sometimes there's been more officers in the room than there has been members of the public, so that's a challenge for us. And also the timings of the meetings, so obviously generally in the evenings, this is one of the early ones, starting at five o'clock, but is this an ideal time? If you're a parent of young children, is it accessible for you indoors? So we've got to think about the time of the meeting so that everybody's included and able to attend it, these meetings, if they so choose. I mentioned the webcasting, and obviously, so people can watch this live, and also people can watch it back, but in essence, the viewing figures are really low, like sometimes 10, 20 people, and we anticipate that many of those people who are viewing it are actually officers of the council or elected members, so we'll do some more research into that to sort of assess who is actually watching that back. But in essence, all the effort we go to is for the webcasting, we're not sure how much of value for money that is. And the other thing to mention is that actually very few decisions are being made, so the idea, as I said at the beginning, was to bring decision-making into the, into the local communities, but the only decisions really that are being made are if we ever need to change the Chair or Vice Chair for whatever reason, and the spending of the budget for anything over £10,000, as was agreed earlier. So we're not making major decisions at these meetings. Okay, so the other thing that this runs alongside is a programme called Future Sheffield. So Future Sheffield, for those of you that aren't aware, is a programme where we're looking at Sheffield City Council as an organisation to make sure it's fit for the future and fit for purpose to deliver for the residents of Sheffield. There are lots of different strands to that Future Sheffield programme, one of which is community engagement, so local area committees, the work of the councils, the work of the community services team that ties into that. So the work that we're looking at in reviewing the public meetings is going to tie into that community engagement to make sure we are doing what we need to for the people of Sheffield. And I think we'll come to do some workshops in this space after my presentation, but the points there you were just making around what we're not getting right and what we're not doing in our community engagement. Through that strategy, we're hoping that we'll be able to improve some of that, so that we're reaching. A lot of people do want digital as part of their community engagement, some people aren't digital enabled, so we've got to make sure that through our Future Sheffield programme, we're fit for purpose as an organisation, offering people what they need for the best way for them to engage. So we are going to look at that as part of that programme. Okay, so what we're going to ask is to get your views really on the public meetings, whether it's your first time you've been or whether you've been lots of times before, what we want to understand really is what works well, what actually brings you to these meetings, what do you think can be improved? Is this the right approach to engage, empower and enable? So again, that's back to the point around, we're talking about getting out to the communities, how we share information, is this the best way to do it? So we're going to have some breakouts, so there's two rooms at the back, there will be an officer prescribed, and councillors will also be joining that meeting, and we want to cover these questions around the public meetings, but we also want to get your ideas around sort of spending plans or what we want to do to commit our funds for the next year, because we've got the £100k again, so we've got some ideas in place. But actually, if people have got thoughts and suggestions about projects or things that would improve things in the community that align with the priorities that we set out in the finance report, that we can try and sort of capture some of that. So we're going to have 15 minutes on each of those, so please be free, we want that feedback, because what I want to do is try and capture that feedback from all the meetings, and then we can feed that into the Future Sheffield programme and further discussions about how we're going to better engage people. So, yeah, so I'm happy to take any questions in terms of sort of logistics, I suppose what I'd ask is that if you've got any comments related to what I've said, you save those for the workshops so we can capture all those together, but I'm happy to take any questions of clarity.
I think you're off the hook.
Stun silence. Must have covered it all. Okay, yeah, so, oh, we've got one question.
Hello, my name is Monica. You mentioned that it's not cost effective to webcast the live meetings. How did you let public know that they are happening?
Thank you, that's a good point. So I think all the council meetings are currently webcast, so as part, when we moved from the current, from the previous system, which was a cabinet system, we moved into a committee structure, and part of that commitment was that all meetings are webcast live. Most of the meetings are held in the town hall, so we've got the equipment all better set up, so it's a little bit more simpler, but you'll see the team here that come along and set all the equipment up. So we do, it is on the website that the meetings are webcast, but we don't necessarily publicise that, and that might be something, again, that's part of the learning and the sort of, the workshop is that if you think people would value watching it, then actually, what can we do to get that message out to people, whether we use, like, so we've got the website there, we could put information on there, do we put posters up and so on so that we can access people through that way? So, but that's the sort of feedback, we would value your views on that in terms of the workshops and how we can sort of try and improve things.
No more hands?
Okay, so, yeah, so we've got, so the staff members at the back will direct you through to the room, so, yeah, so we're going to have half an hour, so 15 minutes on each of the topics we're here, then we'll come back, and then it'll be time for public questions. Hope we've got just some other questions here? Who'd you want to go first?
Yeah, Mick.
You know, it's just working your maths out. We've got 15 minutes on each, yet we've got half an hour. Three fifteens is 45 minutes, one hour in school.
50 minutes on each of the topics, so one topic is around the lack of public meetings, the other topic is around plans for the community and what we want to do to spend the allocation of funds that we've got. So the three questions is one... So the three questions is one part, so say in a word, five minutes per each of those questions, okay? And then 15 minutes on the other subjects.
Can I just go back to item number six, the local committee? Don't feel that it was formally moved, so if we can just go back to item, local area committee budget. So members of... Is that okay?
Chair, I think as we've only received these this evening, normally these get emailed out to all the councillors. I would ask that on this occasion, this be taken at the next meeting, which I believe is going to be in November for us. At least then we will have had a good chance to read through. Because it's retrospective anyway, because it applies to the last year's spend.
Yeah, so it was represented on the members' meeting, the budget.
Do you mean the informal meeting last Thursday? Which was an informal meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I think we have discussed this in an informal meeting of members, I'm happy to approve it now frankly, and I thought we had done, to be honest, I thought we did ask that and we approved it.
Can we just get a vote, if that's okay for Mike, what you suggested, if that's okay go? Next month, yeah? Anybody in favour for next month? Next month? This, next month or this month? What, what do you mean, yeah? Today, sorry, today, today? Gary? Yeah. Dawn? Mike, we know that you want it next month. Mark?
Pass it today, I guess.
Pass it today.
Pass it today.
Larry, today? Yeah, we're going to have to pass it on today, sorry Mike. So members... Can we discuss this later? Yeah, thank you. So members of the North East Local Area Committee are asked to note an expenditure made 2024 to 2025 and agrees to the recommendation set out budget for use on the 2024 and 2025 budget to address the local priorities of the North East lack of the details report. Everyone agree to pass it on today? Thank you, that's formally passed. Moving on to item number nine, round the table discussion on public meetings and community project ideas. The live webcast is now to be paused to allow public participation interactive. We're going to ask Lindsay Hill to explain how this will go down.
Yeah, we've got, as Karl had said earlier, we've actually got three spaces, because we thought this might be a few more people, so there's two.
I guess I have to do it louder. Can everybody take a seat please? Thank you. Thank you so much. So we've had three full rooms and can we go for, can we just get like four to five minutes feedback from the members that were leading it? So in this hall, we had a group on there. And so can I get a volunteer to feedback? Hi Nikki, can you feedback please? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So our group went slightly off piece. We spent a lot of time with the philosophical questions about what is a lack and why is it here and why do and don't people get involved? And there were some really good examples or suggestions from people around, actually, rather than, I mean, putting aside what's in the constitution and rules and things like that, rather than having an event like this, where it's webcast to, we're told, not many people, we should meet in the places that matter to people. And that doesn't mean necessarily having lots of kit and filming it, but we should meet them in the places that matter to them, the schools, the community centres on their street, right in their community, and make it really clear what are the issues that get covered, giving a really brief summary of, you know, what has been covered, what could be covered, rather than it just being very broad. There was, yeah, the really obvious thing, that when it's a burning issue, people turn up because it matters to them. So that answering the why, the why should I get involved is really important. So yeah, somebody talked about, you know, I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a member of staff and a member of my community. I look at my council tax bill and it says all the money that my services have gone on. I want to go somewhere and know that I can find out about what's happening with these services. And there was a general, I know it's a common theme, a general sort of frustration with not being able to signpost to things in the council and communications and, saying what everybody knows. But we did talk about some of the good initiatives that are happening around the website and things changing. Another interesting point was around, actually, if you've got an issue, should you always go to your councillor or go to, you know, somebody senior? Somebody talked about the power of communities actually organising together to try and solve local problems and how much more powerful that is quite often, and it's a way of getting people engaged and getting them active in their community. So taking a sort of, with a trade union hat on, an organising approach, not a servicing approach, and how that can often highlight, sort of empower people and you can find some really good community activists by doing that, rather than just saying, I'll take that away and I'll solve it for you. And letting people know how they can influence the agenda at community meetings like this, treating them as partners, yeah, I think that was it pretty much. If there's anyone in the group who thinks I've missed anything, do say so though.
Anybody else wants to feed anything back from Nikki's group? No? We'll move to the other groups, so Fran's room. Thank you.
Thanks, lots of similar themes, I think. There was quite a lot of questions around what is the purpose of webcasted meetings anyway, when nobody is watching them. We talked a lot about things like having meetings at different times, this is not the greatest time for people to come to a meeting if you're working or if you've got young children, and actually having meetings that you could hold at different kinds of times or in different places. People might prefer to have ward based meetings rather than for the whole area as well, then you can really get into some of the nitty gritty around your own ward and get to some of the real grassroots activity that is happening in wards. And perhaps a better way of doing things is to build up from that grassroots based activity to more general approaches across the area, rather than trying to start doing things at the North East level and then drill down into wards, if you see what I mean, but have it a much more grassroots based approach to different issues. Some of the, again, some similar things, people are often, we don't see the agendas when the, some people aren't seeing the meetings publicised at all. I know we do try and promote them on social media and so on, but people don't see them and if they do see them, they don't know particularly what's going to happen at the meeting, so it doesn't particularly pull people in to attending. There was a bit of a contrast, I think, someone had been to the Green Network meeting that was held in the Methodist Church in First Park a week or so ago, which did pull in lots and lots of people who are really interested in environmental issues from right across the area and felt like a really positive meeting. So that was one approach and we've got different themes as a lack area that we could potentially network around. People were quite keen, we've got some of the services here today, I think when we started, we had quite a lot of different services who used to come and have stalls, so people would be able to, they'd know they'd be able to speak to a service here. And that happens a bit less now, I think, and people were still quite keen to be able to meet with services and so on. We talked about local areas committees should be a good way of trying to work across different silos and bringing some of those different partners together to tackle issues together. But probably this format doesn't lend itself to that basically. So again, it might be better based around a ward or around a particular area where there's a particular issue that people want to work together on. We mentioned about businesses, this isn't a great time for businesses to come and attend and, you know, one of our themes is around business and skills and so on, but we're not getting those people along. So I think in general, it was, we need to be a lot more flexible in how we're delivering these kinds of meetings and working perhaps more in communities and actually maybe doing a bit more that kind of outreach as well. It's not always about getting people to come to us, it should be about us going around and talking to people where they are, even if that's not just in the community centre, but on the street, or just going around and having conversations with people in that way to find out their own views.
Thank you. Karl's room, anyone from... Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I think we had quite similar situations, but there were a few key issues that did arise, and one of them was around understanding what our governance is in Sheffield and our laxity into that. And we had a conversation about the shift from the committee system to the, no, cabinet system to committee system. And our members at public don't always understand the purpose of this meeting and how that feeds into everything that we're doing in the city. So looking at, when we're looking at training, empowering communities and organising, we maybe need to look at how we get some sort of workshop or course that used to run, used to be called I O City Works, we could be get that redesigned, to look at our new structures so that people can be more engaged in that. We also spoke about the purpose of these meetings and potentially having them themed, being really clear about the purpose of the meeting, but also giving feedback, because what people were saying were, they come to meetings, they tell us the same thing over and over again, we go away and do the work, but we never feed back and we never measure the outputs from what it is that people come to speak to us about. And again, about accountability in these meetings. So we had a really good session and I think everyone in our room really enjoyed the workshop style, the debate that got going, the opportunities to be able to feed in. But this bit not so much so. But the workshop theme worked really well. But there's also an element of accountability of services. So whilst we have got some of our services in the room, there are ongoing issues for services that are contracted through the council that will burn on and on and on every year, and we have not got them in the room to ask them what they are doing on our citizens' behalf. So it's about that level of accountability, about whether it be grass cutting or edge cutting or street cleaning or bin emptying, or whatever that might be. I think there was a good point around the demographics in the room and about the age of people in the room and about, we've not got many young people, but, you know, when I were younger, this was last place, I'd be thinking of coming. So we did talk about how we have had a young people's takeover before and we've invited young people from the North East into the town hall, but actually, potentially having a young people's takeover meeting where it's hosted maybe at Longley Sixth Form College, they run the meeting, they work with our voice and influence team and our youth engagement team, so that we can actually get a young person's perspective of what... And we've, you know, done things like this before, but I think it needs to be really clear for the year what it is we want and what it is local residents want to see and how they want to become engaged in it. At the moment, that's not really very clear. And I think one of the main things was, can we do the fun bit at the beginning and the not so fun bit at the end? So can we have the workshops, the engagement bit at the beginning when people come in and then if people don't want to stay, then they can leave when it comes to the decision making processes. And one person in our group had come specifically for agenda item number six and wanted to have an explanation about the spend and questioned it, and we weren't able to do that today because we kind of didn't go through that report line by line like we would have before. So I think it is about being really clear about our accountability as members, but also as services that are being provided in our area. Thank you. Did I, did I get everything or did I miss anything? Okay.
Thank you so much, that's really helpful. The team and the officers will take that away. We have come to item number 10, which is the public questions and the petitions. For you. When you ask a question, a member of the team will bring a microphone to you. Please clearly state your name and which area you're from. If you are unable to answer any question tonight, any questions, if we are unable to ask any questions tonight, we will provide a written response, in which case can you please leave us with some contact details. I would now like to invite questions from the floor. I'd like to answer some questions on the floor, any questions? Lady with her.
Hiya. A few of you know that how strongly I feel about litter and fly tipping in the area. Amongst the...
Can you just state your name and the area you're from?
Karen, and I live in Burngrieve. Yeah, and I feel very strongly about fly tipping and litter in the area. I do a lot of litter picking myself and a lot of reporting, but it's not enough. And I don't know why more work isn't done in schools around the environment, I think they touch on it, but why departments from the council or environmental agencies and that aren't going into schools and talking to children, not just about the environment, but about gun crime and all different things that happen in the area. There's a lot of needles on the green spaces in this area and things, not just the litter and fly tipping, but needles as well. And I report those and they're known hotspots, but nothing gets done, nobody goes out for many of the teams to these regular hotspots that are, and I know that you have them behind your house, don't you? And that's a green space up on Somerset Open Space, there on Stanley Fields, there behind Pittsmore Adventure Playground, and they shouldn't be behind Pittsmore Adventure Playground, that should be right for children playing, they should be able to go there. Groups of children, families, everyone, and the carcasses as needles. And I report them when I'm litter picking, and if there's one on a path and I report it, they'll come and collect that. But where I say there's like a drug den in these trees and I give a specific site for it, nothing gets done. And so, and you see a tree that's like, looks like a nice den, a hiding place for children, why not run in there and play hide and seek and things like that? Again, or a dog could run in or another animal, it's just, it's not, it's not good.
Thank you so much. Do you like to answer? Will you be doing?
Can I give an answer to this?
Yep. Yes please, thank you.
I'm part Margaret Hill from Burngrie Tora, and we have a couple of litter picking groups in this area. And there is a team that goes down Redler to the bottom of Brunswick Road, where they cut the road off for the bypass at the bottom, I'm not sure what that's called area. But they could end there every week cleaning them up, and all I had to do was ask them to come and double check Elsmeag Green before we had our fair. So no kids that were on the bouncer castle would get stuck with a needle, and there was no problem with that. So I don't know, if there is an area where there's always some there, tell that team and if there is a specific team. that team. And if there is a specific team.
Yeah, so I've made a couple complaints about the... Obviously, my house is right next to the green space and there's no actual fence. I know the counter's got like a little chestnut fence, I think it's called, but that's not done much to stop the litter and the needles and stuff like that. I would find needles in my garden. I've got a dog that I've got to always keep an eye on whenever I let her out to go to the loo. There's kids next door. Like even plans for my wife and I, if we were to have kids, I don't want needles in the garden because they should be able to play in the garden. And even without kids, I don't want needles in the garden. I don't want like, I can't even go into my own garden without like, hair and needle stuff. There's something new there. So the same, I don't know what it's... Yeah. Yeah, Catherine Street. Yeah.
Climbing, imagination climbing, you know, that sort of thing. But if it's happening in there, I can ask them to look into that. I'm sorry, I didn't know about it. But now I know about, I'll go in, try and go in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Margaret. Can I get your address for the fence that's not there so we could follow that up as well for you?
Not now.
Not now? No, I mean...
After the meeting.
Yeah, not now. In terms of the school education, Lindsay Hill will explain.
Yeah, we've just got one initiative. We've got an environmental project. And we're not going to change the world, but we're trying to do little things. So we're supporting the picker groups to provide equipment, whatever your request in trying to fund some of that. So we've done like the hoots, we've done, what have we done? Trubs, all sorts of things that might be useful and helpful, rags and things like that. So we know we're not maybe helping in doing that, but we're trying to provide things at the lackages. And then the other initiatives is really new called Little Pickers. Need to make sure I say that right. We should get my teeth in, bro. So what we're doing is actually going into schools and educating around litter and then teaching them about litter picking and they're going away and filling their bags and things like that. And we're giving them a certificate with how much they're doing and they're keeping track and record of that. And a lot of the schools, even outside of the North East, are saying, we'd love this as well in our area. So a lot of the primary schools are already really, really into this and want to do it. And then other initiatives that would be able to feed on to that as well. Yep, that's in this area. So we're doing that, the North East. So if you want to talk to one of our team, we can tell you a bit more about it and which schools. But we've got a list of schools, primarily primary schools, but we are working with some of the secondary schools as well on different initiatives. But the Little Pickers is to go out and we've actually got loads of little kids already that are going around with Little Pickers and picking things up. Regular work. So it's to keep, so they're going to keep going for so long, picking the litter up. And then they get a reward for it. But the idea is that they'll continue to keep doing that. And they are doing, some of them are doing that. And they've been out and they've gone, in fact, they're taking the mums and dabs everywhere they're going with the litter pickup, which is brilliant. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Dawn?
Thank you, Chair. On that, whilst there is work going on through the local area committees, there are also national initiatives that have been delivered through schools in Sheffield. So there are environmental initiatives that are supported by Learn Sheffield, which is going out into every academy and every maintained school. So in some of our schools across already in the area, we have got our environmental champions, which are young people. And they have a lead member in the school, a member of staff, that is actually focusing on the environment, whether that be zero emissions or whether that be the environment we've got, so litter picking. So there is a national initiative which is delivered locally across Sheffield from the education perspective. And all children are taught that as part of their national curriculum as well.
Thank you. Before I bring you in, Mick, I just wanted to congratulate Anne Bentley of the BBC Awards. Can we get a clap? It's the gorgeous lady with the red jacket, just in case you don't see it. Mick, would you like to come?
It's more a housing question, but seeing that we don't get information now, because communication is non-existent, or very little communication, I'd like to know how a committee can spend £4 million and £3 million with no consultation with the tenants who's putting this money in, i.e. the rent money. The £4 million was for putting shutters up and also for cleaning empty properties. Well, if these properties were let quicker than what they're getting done at the moment, they wouldn't need these shutters. I mean, I know at one bit, we used to have the shutters up because central eatings and boilers were getting pinched. But I've not heard of any lately where central eatings have gone. Whether there still are, I've no idea. But the last lot of shutters, they were causing more damage, putting them up because that would take the windows out and it would get all damp. And the other, the £3 million is for the damp and mould, which we've got a lot of. And the feedback with that is that workmen are going to different properties, spending a couple of hours actually doing the job and then sitting outside for the rest of the day because they're on trackers so they can't move. I mean, shouldn't the tenants have been consulted before this money was sort of agreed to take from the HRA?
Thank you. councillor Chaplin would like to come in?
I don't know that I can give you a full response, Mick, but we did talk about this briefly earlier. On the cleaning up of houses, a lot of that's to do with when tenants pass away and they don't have family that can go and clean out the house beforehand. So the council offices have to, or council workers have to go in and clean out those houses. And it's surprising how that, you get a number of those and the sums just start to add up. The shutters were there to protect the properties. But you have raised a lot of issues which really should be coming to the housing committee. And by all means, do bring, there is a space for public questions at full housing committee, which you can bring them there if you want to.
Trying to get the town on now is a nightmare. So I've just stopped bothering and I'm just trying to bring it up at different places, hoping that it'll get fed back. I mean, I did bring it up a couple of days before the actual meeting. And then I sat for two hours and watched the meeting after. And the best of luck to you with them.
Mick, you don't have to turn up to the meeting to put in a question, but obviously, you'll not get a verbal response at the council meeting. But it will force the chair of housing to send you a written reply.
But I mean, we've now got...
That chair of housing is Douglas Johnson.
Yes, it was Douglas that I mentioned it to, previous to the meeting. Of course, we have a meeting with him before he goes to see if there's any questions that we've got. There was a few raised, but there was none actually raised at the meeting. So to me, why bother having these meetings if we're not going to get the feedback that we're giving put to the meeting?
Can I bring councillor Jane Dunn, please?
Covered a lot of it. But I personally feel that maybe we could write as a committee to the housing chair. And actually, if you do ask a question now, the new formula is, you submit your question, you get a written answer. And if you need a supplementary, you can then submit that. And you can do that online. So if you can get online, you can do that from the comfort of your own home and ask the question. No, but nobody's done it yet. And I'd love you to be the first one at full council for me, Mick. What have I done saying that? I do not know.
You do the letter for me, Jane, I'll sign it.
No, but what, you know, we are trying to make, because I completely agree with you. Who's got time to go and down, to go down there? So you can ask your question, your supplementary, you can do it online. I'm quite sure this is a policy that we as a committee can write to the chair as well. But as you've said earlier with your, you know, before, you are more powerful as a group. So banding together is, so I would just demand that if I was you. So you've got the whole of us in here because we're all nodding because we're too worried.
I mean, I've, sorry, with about this £4 million, I've spoke to different tenants today and they've never heard of it. And at the end of the day, it's our money. So where's the communication? I hope there's certain officers in the room listening to me and we might get some answers.
Can I bring in Fran Belgen, please?
Thanks. Yeah, I was just, similar to what Jane said, I was going to say, A, there's a different process for asking public questions at full council, which means you don't have to be there. But B, because you've asked a question here today, then that will get escalated automatically because you've asked a public question. What I imagine will happen as a result, I don't think we've got anyone from housing committee here who actually heard that debate, but that will be the appropriate thing for that to happen to it, would be, it will be escalated to the housing committee. So it should go now in public format to the next housing committee. And I just wanted to mention as well, because you did raise with me the other day, the issue about the damp and mould contractors not doing their job. I've reported that in and I've had a response saying it's being chased up with those contractors. And I will report back on you on that particular instance.
And the final one is, I believe, we got an officer that took over from Janet Sharp. Well, interim, whatever. But don't you think it would be nice for the tenants to meet him? We've heard nothing from him. Where before, we used to have meetings with Janet and get stuff done. Now, we haven't even met this chap. It's only through the webcam that I watched your meet, the last housing meeting, that I knew what he looked like. And I mean, we've got 37,000 tenants out there that is supposedly sort of looking after. But why not come and talk to us and see what we actually want?
Just on the last point about where there's engagement from senior housing officers, and I would hope that includes Chris Ellison, there is a tenants' voices meeting that is taking place. So you've been able to speak at that one too? Yes, yeah. Yeah. So there is that forum available as well. And that is meeting.
Can I bring Wathak in now, please? Thank you. Thanks, Mick, for your question.
No, it's all right. Thank you. Wathak from Wensley Tara. Can I start by thanking our distinguished councillors, especially Sophia, for all the hard work and commitment that has given to my particular area. On another point, I would also like to mention some of the, there's an app called Fix My Street. Does that still exist? Because it does Sweet Fanny Adams, pardon the pun, but it doesn't really do much. Because I've reported some fly tipping fridges and washing machines in front of Allbrook School, and it never did nothing. And then I called it to the council, again, about fly tipping and being dealt with. And it was through several calls. And eventually, when I got the email back, they said, I'm sorry, we couldn't do anything to it, but it's already been picked up by someone else. So somehow, there's a chain missing from the links from fly tipping and for that point. But thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Wathak. I'll bring councillor Dunn in.
Yeah, just on that, Fix My Street is not a council initiative. It's an independent organisation and it can take up to five days for them to then contact the council. So the best way for you to do it is to report it directly to council, not on Fix My Street.
So I've actually done that. In one case, I had a street light in for elderly pensions near, not far from my house. And I reported it on Fix My Street, didn't do nothing. So I called the council. They eventually gave me a reference number. When I called a while ago, six months later, during the winter months specifically, they said that reference number does not exist. So I called again. And believe it or not, next summer, it was fixed by itself. Somebody came and fixed it on a rotor. But apparently, nobody knows whose is it because it's fixed on a building. I've already given them a map of the address, where the light is, and it still did not get through. Thank you.
As long as it's working now. Before I bring you in, Mick, anybody else wants to come? Mike, yeah, Margaret, go ahead.
Sorry. Thanks. Yeah. As regard to fly tipping, my tower is pushing the fact that all charities will collect from your house. And we're pushing to tenants to say, ring these. And we give the numbers of quite a few different charities and ask them to ring them instead of just leaving it outside and arrange for collection by the charity. Hopefully, it's working, but we don't know yet exactly.
Thank you so much. Mick, do you want to come in? You've got literally one minute and we have to close the meeting. One minute, one minute.
Is it a 10 minutes like cows? No, it would just, for what that gentleman said about Fix My Street, don't like saying it, but I reported the issue and it did get done within a couple of days. So don't min it that.
Thank you. Great, great. One more question, I'll allow it, but half a second then. Go on. Does that even exist? 15 seconds.
I did want to ask as well what was being done about the antisocial behaviour and like the drug addict problem. It's particularly bad outside my house. We've had a few like bad interactions that have got aggressive as well. I get concerned about leaving my wife like at home by herself for the week and whatnot. They've removed, I put spikes on the wall, they've removed those spikes. I found one sleeping outside my house the other day. Like, it's a very, very big issue. And I just wanted to know what was being done about that.
Yeah, hello. There's a police officer right next to you. And also, I can pick this up afterwards with you.
Hello. Hi, everyone. I've not spoken yet, but I'm Joe. I'm attached to the Page Hall neighbourhood team. Our inspector that covers the North East has asked me to come today just to cover the whole ward. So Burngreeve, First Park, and obviously you two are both Burngreeve. You mentioned some of the issues with needles then. Is that from Class A users? And is that who's causing the antisocial behaviour? So our team, it's covered by Sergeant Hall up here in Burngreeve. I don't know if you're in touch with him? You are. And how's that relationship working? Obviously, I know my inspector comes to these lap meetings, but...
Yeah, we can't...
On Burngreeve Street recently. Well, it was on Burngreeve Road, but it backs onto Burngreeve Street. And they were using like a makeshift shelter at the back of the house for drug dealing. And it's straight away within...
Can I, sorry, I don't want to disrespect you, but we've got to really close it now. And then we could, while we're cleaning, we can sit on the corner.
I think for some of these issues, what you panted out, the needles...